Myself. Okay, so I'm up, I'm up. Good evening, everybody. My apologies. I'll let you go, Sean. Thank you. I have my apologies. My power went off at my house, so I couldn't do anything. So I'm here and I apologize to everyone who's had to wait, but I'm back. So I sent a message. I hope everybody. I see him. I see him there coming in. My. Okay, so it's just.
Not your fault now.
It happens.
It happens.
But my power went out earlier today. It came back on, so I had everything all set up. I always start setting up early. And I was on Zoom and then my power went out.
So do me a favor if you could make Sylvia co-host, so just in case.
I will do that. Actually, yes, I will do that soon as she is. Let me see if she's on. Not yet. I can make several people co-host, but I don't see Sylvia yet.
I don't see her either. Let me make sure.
Let me see if she's.
I'll set.
TND.
What about Tony? Is he on yet?
I will text them.
I just sent you guys an email because my phone was about to run out of juice.
Afraid that was gonna happen. Okay, so.
It's gonna be okay.
It's not working.
Okay. I'll let them know we're on.
Is Rochelle here?
Not yet.
I can't find for some, I'm sure I have Tony Z. Cell here somewhere.
I just sent him a text.
Okay. Has anybody texted Rochelle?
I did.
That's not a cellphone. There we go.
Just in case anything happens between now and then, and I'm just gonna, I can make several co-host.
Okay, that's, that is a good idea.
And you could always send us a new invite if you have to.
Yeah, but there's all of the, the public waiting to, for the meeting too. I'd rather not ask them all to log off and log back in.
Yeah.
Here comes Mike.
There's Tony.
There's Sylvia. Just missing Rochelle.
She'll be here.
Okay, so I have you and Sylvia as co-host in case something happens.
Belt and suspenders.
Yes.
Okay, Director Sheriff Swat has joined. Are we able to begin the meeting then?
We can.
It looks like it. Good evening, everybody. I am KPPCSD Board President Sylvia Hasai, and I'm calling to order a special meeting of the Kensington Police Protection and Community Services District Board on Wednesday, November 30th. It is seven twenty-six, and if you've joined us and hopefully you've heard already that we had some technical difficulties, a loss of power and locking out of our Zoom account. We apologize for the delay and appreciate your understanding. The clerk will now take the role.
Director Deppi.
Here.
Vice President Logan.
Here.
Director Natoli.
Here.
Director Sheriff Swat.
Here.
And President Hasai.
Here. So I will go ahead and read out our statement that we usually read in the beginning of a meeting. For special meeting agenda items for public comment, individuals wishing to address the Board of Directors. Concerning any items on the agenda will be invited to make oral comments of up to three minutes. I can choose to reduce that if there are many people who want to make comments. Please raise your hand via Zoom when the Board President or I call on you, you'll be unmuted and you can address the Board of Directors. It's not required, but it's helpful if you please state your name clearly for the audio recording. Please address your comments to, to me and the Board and not to staff or other members of the audience. By state law, the Board is not permitted to undertake any actual discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. If you have documentation that you would like distributed to the Board, please mail it to the Clerk of the Board at ten nine four oh San Pablo Avenue, Building B, El Crito, California. Nine four five three oh, which is the location of our temporary offices, or email to llewis@kppcsd.org. So with that, I will do public comment in advance of the first agenda item. Is that correct, Ann?
Actually, since in a special meeting, the public comment is only for matters that are on the agenda. It's a little different.
With the agenda item because we didn't go into closed session?
Yeah. So I, you know, the, the Chair, of course, has discretion to take comment whenever it chooses.
Yeah.
But you're only required to do it in connection with the items that are on the agenda, so you may choose to actually wait and do it in connection with each agenda item.
So that's what I will do. It will, I think, go better that way, honestly. We know there's, I will let people know there are fifty-nine people in the audience. And we know there's a lot of interest. We've received plenty of correspondence on this. So we will go ahead and just begin the discussion of the first agenda item, which is the removal of dead and diseased trees in Kensington Park. And the recommended action is consider limiting the tree work and removal of those trees that independent, or to those trees that the independent arborists all agree should be removed and are not potentially located on school district property. This would be subject to renegotiation and agreement with professional tree care company. And our general manager will present this item. I, I would like to give Board members an opportunity to quickly just speak in advance to set a little context from this was an item that was considered in October with very little, if none, I think just one comment. And so I, I think folks who may not have had a chance to read all the materials or listen, watch the discussion, I'd like to give Board members a chance to make a quick opening comment and then the general manager will present the item. I'm going to start with Director Natoli.
Thank you. I just wanted to give people a little bit of background on the proposed tree removal. Since I've been on the Board, there have been several trees that have fallen on district property during winter rainstorms. Two large Monterey pines fell in the park, one in the grove below Highland and one nearly missing the annex and falling across the parking lot during a holiday weekend. Fortunately, no one was injured and no property was damaged. Also, a large tree fell in the parklet at Coventry in Arlington, knocking down another tree and taking the power line down. A few years earlier in two thousand and eleven, a large pine tree fell between two houses on Arlemont with minimal structural damage. And so that's the concern of trees during the winter rainstorms, and hopefully we will have some rainstorms coming up. The several droughts that we've had and climate change have damaged many of the trees, and the trees in the park are no exception. The district is responsible for trees in the park and bears liability should a tree fall and cause injury or damage. The district has been proactive as time and resources have permitted to evaluate and remove trees that pose a threat. There's now a single point of entry for Highland, which means that all the children and parents escorting children will enter Hilltop via the park or Highland or the old school trail. And the concern is the possibility of children or parents being injured by a falling branch or tree. And also cars are parked often on Highland in that stretch between the last house and the school. So that's the background for the concern. The Monterey pines in the park are infested with beetles with no effective treatment to improve their condition. Some of the Monterey pines along Highland have burgled roots and two are near power lines. These conditions make the trees unstable, especially in wind and rain. And pines are also, as noted, can explode during wildfires. The bid to selectively remove some of the diseased, distressed and dead trees was a little more than the bid to remove all the designated trees. The district has limited funds. When the park was purchased, there was insufficient monies allocated for park maintenance. We can clearly be more selective on tree removal, but will likely cost the district more, leading to fewer resources to go forward on a replanting plan and also greater risk as the trees continue to decline further. Arborists can and do have different opinions, but in the end, it's the, it's the property owner's decision. My interest is certainly for safety of children and parents and users in the park and conserving district resources while minimizing liability. Delaying the removal of these trees will result in higher cost and increased risk to the district. So that's the background that we have. Thank you.
Any other Board member want to open with a brief statement? Okay, Director Sheriff Swat.
Yes, thank you. When we made this decision back in October, we had the opinion of two arborists. And these are not ambulance chasing organizations. These are highly qualified professionals. Our general manager, seeking more information, has received the two present, well, will receive the two presentations that you'll hear tonight. These two wholly independent arborists who are not removing trees are, concur with the earlier opinions. We, as a district, have liability issues, which is taxpayer dollar prevention of loss, but more importantly, we care about our residents. We care about our children. Every school day, children, including my own, play underneath the trees along Highland Boulevard. It is clear that in advance of the winter rains, it's very important to mitigate the risk. It might not be as risky as some things, but we have been told that we have a liability issue. And as Director Natoli told you, in the last six years, we have lost numerous trees throughout Kensington that have required firefighters early hours of the morning in the pouring rain to go and clear those trees out of public roadways. Had those trees fallen a few hours later, they would have seriously injured commuters or could have. So it seems to me that we must follow the experts' advice. We all value and love our foliage around Kensington, but this is an opportunity for us to seek out a replanting plan that we can, that the new Board will engage in in the spring while we remove these trees before the bulk of winter weather happens. So, thank you.
Okay. Any other Board member? All right, Tony, why don't you go ahead and introduce the item, please, and our guests?
Thank you, President. As I, I, I think we should start probably with a brief overview from the arborist who done the work. And that, then I can go back and summarize for the Board what your options are at this meeting. Does that sound acceptable?
Yes, and I also would just let folks know if they're not familiar with our website, any of the other arborist reports are on the website. And that's at kppcsd.org, under Governance, under Meetings, under Today's Date, the full agenda. And I would recommend that folks think about signing up to receive the agenda automatically under a section of the front page that's called Sign Up for Newsletter. Okay, so go ahead, Tony.
They are also attached to the agenda, and my recommendation to the public is to, while the arborist is making their brief presentation, is to look at their report during the presentation so they can follow along easier. We had the original arborist, Mr. Greg Hancock, had a family emergency today, but has consented to be available for about twenty minutes, and it might make sense to start with him because that he is the arborist for the tree company, and he does have a, a family issue at home. And also he would set the, the groundwork for the other arborist, and it was based on that original report that the Board made the original decision to go ahead with the with the tree cutting program. So if we can wait for him for just a minute, he's only available to us for about twenty minutes, and it's very, very nice of him to be available even with his emergency at a, an issue at home. And so we're in the process of contacting him, and he's coming. He'll be up on the screen any moment now. I wanted to also introduce, after Mr., after Mr. Hancock, we have Judith Thomas, and Judith, you might want to just give a wave so everybody knows who you are. Who we asked to do a report and they, and Mr. Thomas Dodge, and Thomas, could you just identify yourself? Thank you. And they did their reports completely independent of each other. And to also, there are some differences in their reports, and they'll cover their reports. And you'll probably have questions about those differences, but I think if, if Greg is available, I don't know, don't see him yet.
I just contacted him to see if he can join, so I think we should move on and when he can, yeah.
Well, then let's start with, with Thomas Dodge. Is that okay, Thomas? I think you're muted.
There we go.
And, and again, I suggest that you look, you have Mr. Dodge's report before you for the, for his presentation. I think it's Arbor Culture Consulting. Is that correct?
That's right.
Yeah, so if you, if you can find that report, the Arbor Culture Consulting, and then I'll turn it over to, to Thomas.
Yeah, so I looked at the trees on the twenty-second. I may not have looked at quite all of the trees that some of the people looked at, but Eileen and I did a walkthrough. We looked at all the stuff together. And, you know, the, all of the reports sum it up very similarly, which is over mature Monterey pines, lots of bark beetles, likely the Ips beetle is a common bark beetle, and definitely red turpentine beetles as well. Pine pitch canker, that's a fungal disease that affects the pines. And some girdling roots, especially up on the ones by Highland. And all of the trees are kind of just on the way out, you know, one way or another. You know, there's, there's a few couple of dead trees. There's one that's really decayed with the large cavity. That's concerning. And, yeah, you guys got your hands full.
You recommended maintaining some trees, is that correct?
Only because they were in low, low activity areas, from what I could tell, no, no paths, not the fall zone to the picnic benches where the kids are. And even then, with the caveat that concerns about fire were not in my scope. But there's a caveat that, you know, the logistics of hiring a tree company to get in there, the costs, concerns about fire, all of those are concerns you guys have to take into account when you, you know, whether you retain those. They're dying and they're gonna die relatively soon, but they do provide habitat for wildlife and the likelihood of them hitting somebody when they fail, if they fail, is probably low.
All right. I, I think we can go ahead with, with Judy Thomas next. You know, I neglected Thomas, could you give a little background on yourself, just so everybody knows who you are?
I can, and it's, it's in the report as well.
Actually, hold on. We were gonna ask Thomas to do that first before we go back to you.
Yeah, so I'm a registered consulting arborist, board certified master arborist, tree risk assessment qualified. Been a municipal arborist for years and started out as a tree climber, been through every aspect of the business. And, you know, that, that's my background.
Okay, now we can go to Judy.
Yeah, I have the same qualifications as Thomas Dodge. I'm a board certified master arborist. I'm a registered consulting arborist. I'm tree risk assessment qualified. I taught at Merrick College in the Landscape Horticulture Department full-time for thirty years, and I taught forestry and redwood and forest ecology, so I've had a background in all of this. And I have a master's degree in fire ecology from San Jose State. It was on giant sequoias, but there are many similarities between the fact that they don't stump sprout like coast redwoods. And they have serotinous cones, which means that when there's heat applied to the cones, the wax will melt and the seeds will fall out on the ground. So there are many similarities. I saw the area and I concur with everything that Thomas Dodge has said regarding the condition of the pines. And I would invite anyone who wants to know about risks of Monterey pines. I live in the Oakland Hills near, near Skyline and Keller. And if any of you were to drive from, on Skyline Boulevard in Oakland, from Redwood Road to Keller going south, and then turn around and drive back to Redwood Road going north, you'll see how many Monterey pines along Skyline Boulevard in Oakland have failed. And so I have great concerns about that. The other thing is that my children grew up on the corner of Westminster and Windsor in Kensington. And they attended Kensington School and Portila Junior High and El Cerrito High and then went to college. So I know the neighborhood extremely well and have walked Kensington Park countless times over the years. I've often taught many labs at the Blake Estate in Kensington. And I feel that if you consider some sort of a replanting plan, there would be ways for Kensington Park to be used by landscape design students from Merrick College in the future as we use the Blake Estate.
You want to go ahead and summarize your, any, any, ask your report? I know you said you agreed with Thomas, but you, could you just summarize it briefly?
The trees, the trees, the average lifespan of a Monterey pine is about sixty years. And they have a habit of dropping limbs when they get shaded out. Then they end up becoming incredibly top-heavy. And so then they're set up for either total tree failure or limb failure. And in my report, I detailed some studies that have been done by the tree failure people here in California. And they have found that Monterey pines can often fail at locations, not at the branch, at the trunks, but anywhere out on the branches, and they can fail whether they are diseased or whether they are not diseased. And so of all the trees I know, they found Monterey pines are the worst ones to have in public areas. And so my, my feeling about them is that it's better to consider some other options. And if you wanted to retain some Monterey pines somewhere in the, in the area, they should be in a group. Because if you take out, if you leave pines exposed to the wind that have been growing in a group for many years, they're much more prone to wind failure. And so this is why I would recommend that you remove them and then look at other options. And some will recede, so you could keep some Monterey pine somewhere in the community if you wish. But there are other options now, and with fire issues, flames are three times the height of vegetation. And so if those pines burn and you have wind, you're gonna have some major issues within the community. And this is concerning to me as a former resident of Kensington for so many years.
Right, thank you very much. We still, we might not get Mr. Hancock. I know he has a, an issue at his house that he has to take care of, but if he's able to appear, we'll, we'll switch to him. But his report is with the Professional Tree Care Company. If you look at your agenda packet, that report was prepared by Mr. Hancock. And he is pretty strongly states that the speaks in favor of removing the Monterey pines. In fact, his closing line on that, on the, his arborist's report is that most of these trees should have been removed long ago. So he feels very strongly about that. We'll let him speak to, for himself when he, when he arrives. We do have another arborist that asked to be, to speak as part of public comment. I'll leave that up to the President's discretion. If you'd like that person to speak now, that was Mr. Murgatroyd, who met with the citizens. And I, I think he wants, he would like five minutes. It might be appropriate to speak now with the other arborist, or if you want to hear him later, it's really up to the discretion of the President.
Um, I'd like to make sure that our Board members can ask these arborists questions. I'm okay with giving him, you know, three to five minutes. Because I know he is very important to some people who care very much about this issue. Let me find him. I know he's here. Okay, I'm going to, Sean, this is Sylvia Hasai, the President. I'm gonna, go ahead, you gonna mute? And if, could you tell me about how long you think you need?
I'll, I'll just need a few minutes.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks, Sylvia. Hey, everybody. Thanks for having me. So, yeah, like Sylvia mentioned, my name's Sean. I'm an arborist with a company out in the East Bay called Save a Tree. I came in on Monday this week to meet with a group of citizens who were concerned with saving the trees. We walked the site. We took a look at a lot of stuff out there. And, yeah, so after, you know, viewing the site and then meeting with some of our plant healthcare specialists in-house with Save a Tree. You know, I agree, there's a ton of problems. There's beetles, red turpentine beetles, there's some fungal issues, root issues with the girdling up on the hill, especially near Highland by the school. But, you know, in my experience, it doesn't look like all of these trees are beyond, and I'm sure you could guess from the name of our company, where I'm going with this. But in my experience, it doesn't look like all of these trees are beyond saving. Some of them are still viable to have their lifespans expanded. So what I've proposed to some members of the community, I believe Catherine de Nier-Gard has received a copy of it. We put out a proposal just earlier today. Is to drop a tree preservation plan to identify, you know, trees that can feasibly be saved where, you know, the risk is not too high and, you know, give you guys some actionable items for management plans moving forward in the future. So that's on the table. Catherine has that document. But, you know, in the end, obviously, it's up to the community to weigh the, you know, the risk versus the value of the trees. You know, if you guys do end up choosing trees to save, you know, we'd love to be a partner and help with that, you know, with that decision, get you guys reports. I know you've already had a few written, so. But, you know, we have a team of in-house RCA certified arborists, like, just like you guys that are already here. And, yeah, we peer review all of our work, so any reports that we get should would be, you know, great info on top of what you already have. Yeah, some of the trees do seem viable as far as extending their lifespans and, you know, maintaining their health for as long as possible in the park.
Can you give us your background as well, Sean, please?
Yeah, so I'm an ISA certified arborist. Like I said, I work with a company called Save a Tree. Save a Tree, you know, we specialize, obviously, based on the name. We specialize in tree preservation, tree rehabilitation. So, you know, we love projects like this, but again, it comes down to the community and what the community decides, how you guys value the trees versus the risk.
And, and you have how many years' experience?
I've been in the industry for about six years, a lot of experience on the utility side, risk management. I'm not track certified like the other arborists here, but I had exposure to that. Yeah, I do agree, there's several trees in the park that are, you know, obvious candidates for removal, need to go as soon as possible, but a few that appear viable.
I think you also pointed out that two of them were near PG and E lines. Is that who, the utility you worked for?
I did, yeah. I worked for PG and E at the time. I worked down south for SoCal Edison. I did, yeah, I worked for PG and E at the time. I worked down south for SoCal, uh, Edison.
Okay, um, so, uh, one last, I would like to ask one last question to Sean because I, uh, kind of, uh, forced my way onto that tour, if you will. Um, can you explain the, uh, uh, pot, if the board chose to look into saving any trees of the Monterey pines, which again is a big if, uh, what the treatment is per tree?
So, um, yeah, so if, you know, where the beetle infestations are really advanced, um, those are some of the trees that are, you know, right off the bat, not feasible to save. Uh, a few of them show signs of, you know, a minor active infestation. And then some of them show signs of what looks like, you know, something that I couldn't positively identify as an active infection or infestation of beetles, uh, looks like maybe past season. Um, the treatment plan for that, uh, you know, we would have to run it through our consulting department and come up with a full scale version of it. Uh, the basics would be, um, tree injections. So, um, we're looking at using something like triage or abicide. Um, injected straight into the trunks of the tree, dried the beetles out, and then, uh, most likely a really aggressive watering plan. Yeah, just to, you know, helps trees fight off the beetles.
If I remember correctly, if it wasn't directly into the tree, it was into the soil and the amount of water in the summertime was two thousand gallons per tree to get down to two inches down. And, uh, every three weeks in the summer and possibly less, uh, frequently in the winter, but also possible.
Yeah, I, I, um, so I met with our, uh, plant healthcare specialist today and, uh, he reined me in on some of those numbers. I think I was being a little bit uh, aggressive with my estimates, just to give you an idea of kind of what the scope can be for something like this. Um, yeah, we'd be looking at probably around, you know, a thousand gallons per tree or two thousand gallons per, I don't know, I'm forgetting the square footage we, we went over earlier. Um, but yeah, I mean, it's an extensive watering project. And, um, you know, it's probably more like every six, every five, six weeks in the summer. And then actually, depending on the, you know, the precipitation levels in the winter, maybe even expanding that, um, you know, when the trees are really looking for that water uptake that they're used to, that they're not getting here in these drought years.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, uh, uh, is any board members, I think, do board members want to ask questions of all three arborists at this time?
I'd like to ask Sean, how successful is that treatment and how long would that treatment be, um, occurring?
Are you speaking about the tree injections?
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, the one we typically use is, uh, called triage and I can't remember the exact chemical name. I believe that's the brand name. Uh, but it's, uh, typically gives effective control for two years. Um, so each tree gets an injection, should help control beetle populations for up to two years. And then the watering treatment on top of that. Um, you know, yeah, we're looking at several times every six weeks or so during the summer and then, uh, continuing throughout the year. It would need to be ongoing, um, you know, with beetle infections, infestations in California. I mean, they're all over the place. They're very common. Um, if you keep them out of the tree, to keep them out of the tree, it's, you know, it's an ongoing process.
Thomas and Judy, uh, are you familiar with this treatment and do you find that it's an effective treatment? Judy, you're on mute.
Uh, hold on a second, everybody. Um, uh, members of the audience, please do not use the Q and A function. It's not something we, we use in these meetings. I'm not, I'm not sure why it's even live, but, uh, please don't use it.
My feeling is that, uh, treatment of that type is costly. And it isn't a hundred percent effective. And I'm very concerned about the fact that if you save certain trees and you remove trees around them, then the trees that are left are more susceptible to wind throw in storms. And so my feeling is it's better to, um, look at the trees in terms of either keeping some in groups or removing them and letting some regenerate if you want some in the future and then doing a replanting plan. And then you're not having to spend money for chemicals.
Can we have Thomas answer that as well?
Uh, yeah, I, some of the trees that, uh, have some of the healthier foliage seem to be along Kensington, uh, the park path of Kensington Road, whatever that is, going up to the school. And a lot of those, uh, those are the ones that lean right over the, the path and they're still in decline. My concern for the ones near the top and Highland is the, uh, live crown ratio. The, a lot of those are topped. There's a very, uh, small live crown on those. And some of the failures that we have seen in Oakland Hills, uh, they, they do fracture above, just above grave. And that's most common and that's borne out with some of the, uh, info that Judy included on tree failure report. That when you get that low live crown ratio, the, uh, the likelihood of them fracturing at the base, uh, goes up.
Thank you. All right, I see, um, uh, Chris, uh, Director Deppe.
Oh, yeah, that's me. Um, I have a question for, um, the Save a Tree, Sean Murgatroyd. Uh, Sean, um, what does, if the trees are going to be saved, uh, what commercial, um, relationship would Save a Tree have or what, what's Save a Tree's role in, in saving the trees?
So as of now, um, our proposal on the table is to develop a consultant report, um, to analyze, you know, the feasibility of saving the trees. It's a health assessment, tree risk assessment. Uh, and then proposing, uh, management plan. So that's the extent of it at this time, you know. If you guys wanted that management plan, took a look at it, you could turn it over to anybody feasibly in the tree care industry that could fulfill that. Um, you know, obviously we'd love to do the work, but I'm not here to, you know, try and sell it.
And Because I, you know, the point of having, uh, Thomas and Judith who's having completely independent arborists that have no skin in the game and, and you can't really say that about Sean, obviously. So I think we have to take his, his opinion with a grain of salt. If we're gonna take the opinion of professional tree care with a grain of salt. So, um, you know, that was brought up with a lot of members of the public. We don't want to have anybody that has any work to do with their, their report. And so, um, I think that should be pointed out. Nothing against you, Sean. You're obviously, you, you run a business and you've got to make money. So that's totally understandable.
Yeah, no offense taken.
And, uh, I, also the risk assessments have been done by several of the, um, I know Thomas, your report, I believe, had, you know, um, uh, numbers about how likely they were to be saved. Um, you know, uh, you had two different columns, um, and I forget the exact title, but they were about, um, likelihood of being saved and condition poor, you know, poor or moderate or whatever. And I think most of them were ones and poor.
Right, those were, uh, uh, health and structure assessments. So that took into account the, the amount of dead wood in the trees, the, the pest infestations, the age, uh, live crown ratio, location exposure, some of the things, uh, Judy already mentioned about, uh, wind exposure and some of those risks, if you remove some of those trees.
Uh, Director Sarris Watt.
Um, thank you, uh, Judith and Thomas so much for your reports. Sean, I have not seen, um, any documentation from you, so, um, but, uh, they are excellent and I encourage every community member to go on our website. I'm sorry, I tried to email. Uh, Director Deppe kindly put them together, all our tree documents, uh, but they actually proved too large to send. So, I encourage everyone to go to this meeting and look for, uh, Judith's evaluation of the risks associated with trees in Kensington and the Arbor Culture Consulting Report. Um, Judy, a question for you. And your report is fabulous because it's honestly like arboring for dummies for me because none of us are, are arborists and and we're here to take the expert opinion. Um, I was wondering, uh, you mentioned that we can put new trees in where the roots of old trees. And so I'm wondering if our plan for professional, um, to grind the stumps out, if that is the best, we, we didn't want to leave all the limbs, but will that give us the best environment for replanting?
You could grind the stumps out or not, as you choose. Uh, the area would look nicer if the stumps are ground down below the soil level, so that it will look like nothing is there. But all one has to do is to take a probe and probe between the roots and find a gap between the roots of each tree, uh, that's either five gallon or fifteen gallon can size and put in a new tree in between and make sure they're kept irrigated until we have rain. But that way, you could put in any trees you want between the roots of the old Monterey pines and do a whole new landscape design. And that's why I mentioned that my former colleague, Chris Grant, who's co-chair of the Landscape Horticulture Department at Merritt College, he teaches landscape design classes. And his students have to do design projects. And to me, if he, if he would be willing, um, his students could each get an area and help you put in a design for each area in the park. Uh, to put in Mediterranean type plants or whatever you want. And in my report, I listed some possible plants that I really like that would make the garden more contemporary, you know, more Mediterranean. Um, you know, Monterey pines are beautiful and everyone loves them dearly, but it's unfortunate, they're structurally, they're, they are probably the most difficult pine in the area. And the tree failure profiles for them is not that good. And so you could allow some Monterey pines to come back in certain areas if you wanted, and they will recede from, uh, cones that are left on the ground, even if they've gone through a chipper. Uh, you'll still get some seedlings coming in. And so you could then choose if you wanted to have some somewhere. But I think it's time for a new palette at the Kensington Park. And that's just the way I am. I mean, I'm a life member of the Mediterranean Garden Society too. And, um, there are fabulous plants out there that you could use. And so I just listed some of them in my report.
Uh, well, I think it was the understanding of this board that the next board would be, uh, formulating a replanting plan. Um, we took the burden on of unpopular burden of removing trees knowing that the winter is coming and that children would be away from the park and most users would be away from the park. Um, and hope to take the plants out. But, uh, I know we've also been recommended perhaps Timothy Cole at Blake Garden and Vice President Logan and myself um, are in conversation, uh, with good, uh, guests Kensington and hopefully uh, that will lead us taking a little time, uh, to speak with, uh, the, uh, local organizations that are talking about native, uh, people helping replant and bring back native plants. So that could be another conversation that the future board could have. Um, but I thank you for your time, both of you and your, and your, uh, excellent, excellent.
No, I could make one other comment. And it's a story about a college president at an eastern university many years ago where they had to take out a, an American elm that had been there since the founding fathers were in, um, you know, way back many years ago. And no one wanted the tree taken out, but it was so dangerous. Um, they finally realized they had to remove it. And so they scheduled a funeral for the tree. And they set up bleachers and had a band and they had a service for the tree. And then the art department took wood from the tree to make art projects. And they planted other seedling elms from the same tree in other places that were appropriate. And so there are ways to look at old trees which are wonderful and mourn them. And so we have to look at how people feel. You know, because it's, it's, it's painful to get rid of something that's been there for most of the lives of a lot of the people in the community.
What happens with the beetle infestation? I mean, what does that wood need to be? Nothing needs to happen with that wood needs to be removed, right? Or is it, okay?
No, if the trees are removed, the beetles go away.
Oh, okay.
If the wood is chipped, it could be spread all around. And, um, if the stumps are ground, the, the grindings can be put anywhere around the park. And then you just have to replant.
Thank you.
Um, any other director before I ask a question? Director Logan. But you're muted.
Okay, uh, yes, I do, I, I just one question. I know, uh, around Highland, there are, I think there are eight, I think the total of eight of the, of the, of the pines and either one that I think are, was the term you used, um, are very top heavy or whatever. Um, and those are, those are basically the only ones that are in that air, in that area. So basically, if tho, if those were all removed at the same time, would be a very large bearing area. Is there a problem with erosion at that point? As far as, uh, af- after, if they were to all be taken out? No, none?
I don't think so. And if the area is mulched with the chips from the trees that are taken out, that helps also.
Uh, I will just answer because I did ask a landscape architect the same question and, uh, they said no. The roots that are there would hold it. And if it was a concern, you could put jute on top, but they did not think it was going to be a problem.
Okay, okay, yeah, I just, I just know that that, at the top of that hill, that there'd be a large barren area and I just, I say at that point, you know, I would hate to see that, you know, this rains and then rains, somebody just eat away at, at some of that topsoil. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, I don't know how long our arborists can stay with us. I would like to, um, get to public comment, which may include some questions and, uh, we're gonna, uh, what we usually do with questions is have people, um, if you have a question, you can, you can at least ask it, the, uh, it can be answered only at the direction of the board and we usually group them together. Um, and, uh, I think I'll go ahead and do that. And, um, Sean, any parting thoughts about anything that you heard here, uh, about, I'm, oh, sorry, Director Deppe?
Um, I was just gonna suggest that if you could take all the questions and then answer them all at once rather than do it, uh, individually, that would
Yeah, that's what I was suggesting, that, you know, you can, you can inquire something and, you know, uh, we'll take note of the question and then we'll try to rec- cycle back at the end of comment. Um, I, Sean, I wanted to ask you about the spreading of bark because you're the only person I know who has said it shouldn't be done. And I'm curious as to your reasoning.
So my, my concern with spreading bark is if we're gonna leave pine standing, you know, remove some and leave others standing in the same area and then spread that bark. Um, I've seen trouble with it on past, you know, properties that we've worked on where we, you know, we remove a tree that's infested with beetles, hoping to stop the spread to other trees on the property. And it doesn't happen. We spread the bark. Um, so it's, you know, it's just our general practice now to remove bark from infested trees, uh, not reuse it in the landscape. But, you know, if all the trees are gone, then shouldn't be a problem. They do, you know, it's host specific, so. If there's mines to infect, then pine beetles won't have anything to eat.
All right, thank you. Okay, um, let me, uh, ask, uh, folks to, um, raise your hand if you would like to, um, make a public comment or, um, ask a question. And I would ask that, um, everyone who wants to do so, please do so now, raise your hand because I have to judge the time. And, um, I do that partially, um, with knowing that. And, uh, I could also say that, um, uh, we could also take a poll and numbers of who are, you know, opposed to this, just outright opposed because I, I know many on the, on the call are probably feeling that way and have expressed that. Um, so I just don't, you know, I, I think we know that, just so you, you're aware of that. Um, I see third, uh, Director Natoli?
Yes, um, Craig Hancock just sent an email that he's available, so he might join. I just wanted to give you a heads up.
Okay, um, maybe that would be the better way to go and have him join before we go to public comment. I apologize for that, but we are trying to have a very thorough conversation here. So you can keep your hands up since it's not physical. Um, you can just kind of hold your place in line. And, um, we're going to, uh, let, um, Craig in. I'm gonna go back to this view, um. All right, um, so Tony, when he comes on in, uh, I'll let you introduce him.
Sure, actually I can give you a little background on him. He is the original arborist on the project. And, um, he does work, uh, does work for Professional Tree Company who we, uh, contracted with. And if you look at your packets, the arborist report that at the top of the page says Professional Tree Company is the report that he wrote. So if you can refer to that, uh, that item when he comes on, that's what he will be addressing. Um, but I think it's good to have all the arborists together and hear the, hear the reports at one time. We appreciate Sean sticking around and, uh, providing uh, his, um, uh, Uh, his um, uh, direct uh opinions. And all, and the other two uh arborists also, so. Uh, let's see, we're still waiting for Craig.
I, I might offer at this time too that um, uh, we also do realize that there is a potential um difficulty with the, with the boundary between the WCC USD. And the KPP CSD, um, there is some, we haven't gotten a 100% confirmation. And so there are some trees that uh we've noted. Uh, may fall, uh, may have, we may have thought we're on KPP CSD property that may actually be on WCC USD property. Uh, and those are, um, if you're following this really closely, you, you already probably know this, but for folks who are not intimately familiar with every tree is. I've become, uh, as you walk up from the community center on the fire road. And you uh come to the fence line, uh, the back fence that. Is at the bottom of the lower yard and is behind the community center that has been clearly established as a boundary. But as you hit that corner post and then start to go uh. Kind of east up the fire road. On the southern side, uh, the boundary there is not as clear to everybody. And it's possible that the trees from that point up uh on between the fire road and the school fence. Heading up to the school maybe on WCC USD property. Um, okay, Craig Hancock is with us and Craig, I'm going to um. Unmute you and um. Uh, thank you very much for joining us. I know it's a bit of a hardship today. And we'd love for you to introduce yourself, uh, give us your, kind of your background, professional background. And then we've basically just talked about the reports that were given uh and the assessments that were made and you could certainly um. Go ahead and tell us yours again. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, my name is Craig Hancock. I work with the uh Professional Tree Care Company. Uh, I've been doing tree work uh since the mid eighties, was a certified arborist uh in nineteen ninety-five, continue to hold that. I'm tree risk assessment qualified. Um. That's about that, so. What, but I, I haven't done a report. On these trees.
Uh, well, I mean, your report is partly in the, in the proposal that you, that we got from.
No, no.
No.
I haven't done a report.
Okay, um. Then Tony, maybe you want to elicit what exactly you would like to get from this?
Um, Craig, I, uh, Charlie told me that you, uh, you had supplied the information. Uh, it's Kensington Park Arborist Observation.
Now, yes, yeah, I did that, but I just want to be clear.
That, that's.
Report is a far different endeavor.
Okay, uh, sorry about that, but that's what we're referring to as.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Uh, Thomas and Judy, I guess, did what we would call reports.
So could you summarize your observations? Uh, Craig, thank you.
Sure, um, I have it here in front of me. So the observations are that Monterey pines as a species. Are uh short-lived, um, not great trees to have uh around a lot of people. And all of the pine trees over there on site. Uh, suffer from extensive uh red turpentine beetle infestation. As well as age, they're nearing the end of their lives. Um, the three trees along Highland, maybe the fourth as well, but certainly the three. Um, were previously topped, um, which is pretty easy to see. And um, there's a tree with a, just a gigantic cavity at the base right there by Highland as well, right by the stairs. That is an obvious uh removal, so. Based on structural problems with the trees, the beetle infestation. Um. The age of the trees, um. It's, was easy for me to recommend that they, I didn't even recommend it. They called to have a price on the removal, but. It's not a hard one to argue with.
Okay. Thank you. And um. Any board members want to ask uh Mr. Hancock any questions for clarification?
If, if there aren't any questions, we might want to excuse him uh because of his personal situation. It's up to the president.
Um, Director Sherwood? Okay. Um, all right, I think um, that is certainly uh fine if you have to leave us. Uh, again, we appreciate you uh coming briefly to talk to us, uh, and uh. We will uh take some comments from the public. They, they have two independent arborists here also to, to speak with who I would agree with your. Conclusions and assessments, basically. Um, so I will uh go ahead now to public comment and um.
Uh, I can, I can stay for until eight forty-five. I don't know if you want me to or not, it's.
Yeah, no, abso- absolutely would love you to stay if you can.
Okay.
I, before we go to public comment, I wanted to ask um, again, to the members of the public to please not use the Q and A function. We aren't using that. Um, I did have a question for Thomas Dodge though, that uh, that a question reminded me, which is you indicated that some of the trees. And I was curious if you were clear on which ones, if they fell, the risk may be low, uh, actually on, on, you know, falling on people or cars. Because most of the trees that are, I would say controversial are in areas of, you know, high traffic. Um, so um. Could you talk about that a little bit?
So I was just referring to uh two groves of trees that. That uh the acacias, there's a dead acacia and a few dying and there, there is um. And there's a grove of uh pines and there's one dead pine there and the other ones are in decline uh west of Windsor, so between uh that kind of. Cold sack with a parking or the picnic benches and Arlington, there's one uh sort of informal walking path that comes up from Arlington there, uh, but.
You're talking about.
Uh, one of those. But they're nowhere near as large as the uh, the ones up by the school and up on Highland.
Behind them, uh, yeah, I don't know if you noticed that, but there are some homes behind those acacias.
Right. They're dying, they're, uh, it's just whether uh, you know, if you're cutting down live trees, you want to. Keep it in area. That, that's the option there.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead to public comments. And again, um. Like I said, uh, I have sixteen people who have their hands up. So if you're gonna make a comment, I'm gonna ask folks to limit it to. Two minutes, not three.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, yes.
Before we open it up? So I think. Um. That the value of having trees and what they bring to any site uh is incred. Able to them that I do. But I think it needs to be stated that um, you cannot keep all trees forever. And not all trees are perfectly suited to any site that you choose to plant them. And um. I, I think it's a great site to have trees. They do, they do nothing but good things, but uh trees that are shorter. Uh, that might have a longer lifespan, uh, where you could plant twenty or thirty of them. Or better alternative than saving. Something that is nearing the end of its life cycle is clearly in decline uh with infestation, both disease and beetle. I, I, I just don't. Yeah, they, you know, there are far better things that could be planted and grown there, which is my entire. Uh, point. Of the letter saying why they should be removed, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, so I've got seven. For some reason, the only person, uh, I'm gonna, only person who shows up when I hit attendees is Sean. So Sean, I'm actually going to um. I'm gonna uh maybe put you back down just for a moment to see whether that helps me um. Get back to the rest of the uh. Um, I, Linnell, I can't. And see, and see them. You're, you're muted.
Okay, I can start. Where would you like me to start? At the bottom?
Uh, just start up at the top. Usually that's kind of the way it goes.
Okay, so Brian. Ullin Brock?
Okay. Thank you, Brian. You've got up to two minutes, please. And you should. Go ahead.
He's muted.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. You were very close with the last name. Uh, my name is Brian Ullin Brock. Um. Director, uh, Director Eileen Natoli looked at some of the trees with. Another arborist besides the Professional Tree Company fellow that, that we've been talking to. His name is Joe Berg of the Davy Tree Expert Company. He Davy is a national company with headquarters in Ohio. They have a very good reputation, but are also on the expensive side. Here's an, an interview with Joe Berg conducted eleven eighteen twenty-two on the phone. Joe Berg from Davy said that Eileen chose the thirty-two trees herself and that she wanted them all gone. He looked at about fifteen trees. He gave what he described as a limited visual inspection of. Some of the arborist inspection. She wanted a bid to cut the thirty-two trees. Joe said that he gave her pushback on some of the trees, disagreeing with what she wanted. And as we know, didn't bid on all of the trees, including a significant number of the pines and the oak. I kept asking him if he saw any sign of pine beetles on the trees. He said he did see on one tree. That was infested uh. Standing Kensington Park Road. He said he wouldn't be surprised if some of the other pines had some beetles, but that the large pine trees. Have good defenses and it would take years to affect them. He said that it would take many years of the pine beetle infestation to kill them if they are infested. If and when they died, it would take many more years for them to fall down or crumble. He said that even dead needles take time, take years to fall down.
End of the time, I really do. All right, uh, next person on the list, you should, oh, somehow, maybe I can do this now.
Okay.
Um, nope, uh, you'll have to remove, um, let's see if I can. Uh, you'll have to remove Brian, you'll, uh, let's see. Uh, yeah, you'll have to go ahead and do it though. I see, for some reason I can't call on people.
Okay. Next person is Kat, Katja.
Okay. Uh, Katja, please keep your comments to two minutes. Thank you.
Katja, the, the, near guard?
Have you uh given her permission to talk?
Mm-hmm. Okay, let me try her again. Allowed to talk? Katja?
Now, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So um. Just to continue, uh. Uh, he made the point that. Any tree will fall given enough wind and water and that no one could predict with a hundred percent accuracy when a tree would fall. He said that one has to assess what is the risk, what is your tolerance to risk? And what is the value of the trees to you? And that, I think, are the questions that face us as a community. Um, uh, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about some other things, um. This, that if you want an expert to express a certain conclusion, you can find one. And that is what has happened here. Director Eileen Natoli started out with an. RFP for cutting down thirty-three diseased trees. She continues to repeat that the trees are all invested with, infested with pine beetles. So it is no surprise that the three arborist opinions that Eileen got all agree with her. We have heard from an interview with Joe Berg of the Davy Tree Co. Company, three trees. She wasn't interested in the condition. We've just heard Craig Hancock say the same thing. He didn't make an arborist report, just made some observations in general about Monterey pines. When the community gave pushback about the destruction of the trees, she went out in mid-November and found two more expert opinions that would agree with hers. I heard that she contracted another expert, asking for a judgment to call the Monterey pines diseased. They ref. Refused. We also have conflicting expert.
That's the end of your time, Katja, sorry.
This isn't really fair. I mean, we could at least get.
Yeah, I've given everybody two minutes. That's how it's going. I'm sorry. Uh, we've got a lot of folks who want to speak.
It's not.
Continue this conversation.
Fair conversation.
Um, this is public comment, uh, please uh call the next person.
Sean Murgatroyd.
Uh, Sean's hand is up because he's, it's been up the whole time.
Okay, so I'll lower his.
Sorry about that.
Thank you, that's okay. Go to the next person.
Uh, Cassandra Dugan.
Okay, uh, Cassandra, you have two minutes, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. I am a board member-elect on the incoming board. I want to say thank you for taking the nine trees that are on uh, school district property off the list.
Uh, we haven't.
Those. Pardon?
So that, we, that has not been decided. I just made a comment about that, but go ahead.
Well, uh, those. Would have, had not delayed all of this. By the way, please keep telling us how many citizens are attending. You know, I want to mention that it really would behoove you guys to listen to your community. In the recent elections, a huge majority vote against the outgoing, going board showed you that people really were not happy with you. Please redeem your image now by listening. Uh, Chris Deppi, I agree. I think we need a UC Berkeley expert to weigh in, someone, you know, we've. Seen the different directions. We have another person who apparently spoke to Eileen Natoli, just like Katya just said. Uh, that person doesn't want his name given because he's conflict averse. But he said, yeah, Eileen called and tried to get him to agree to rubber stamp what she wanted, but he wouldn't agree. And so she, you know, he refused, she moved on. These trees look good. They have beautiful green crowns. We barely found any sign of bark beetles when we looked closely with. With Sean, you know. We're very concerned that if we cut down nine tall, beautiful trees in the slope along Highland Boulevard, the hillside will slide. During the rainy season this year. I'm sorry, I don't believe you that that won't happen. That's happened plenty of places. Uh, nobody seems to think about the carbon that is sequestered in these trees, which will be released. Nor the fact that the newly planted trees will not remove one ton of CO2 from the atmosphere as these trees do for. There are some new trees. Let's shop for a Mediterranean-style garden. You know, that is not what we're about here. We want to save our trees and keep the carbon in them. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Uh, next person, please.
Andrew Reed.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
First of all, thank, I'd like to thank the board for taking up this very important issue. Uh, however, I would like to say something about the pro. Us that opportunity for the remaining and future board members. We could have all saved a lot of time and stomach lining. If the kind of quality, independent written reports that we now see from people like Judith and this other gentleman who's still here had been available upfront. Um. I think this has made it a no-brainer. Uh, I thought Judith Thomas's report was first class, it's instructive. Again, it's a no-brainer. I, I am very frustrated as to why a board member is doing staff work. It seems as though those lessons have not been learned. I'll leave it at that. Um, I'd like to urge the future board to absolutely listen to Judith Thomas's report. Where she says, let's get on a replanting plan right away. I differ with her only because in my experience of hiring landscape architects and building out commercial space, um, I would prefer for landscape architect only and not a lot of volunteers or students. I, I do think that this is an opportunity for professionals to do the work. I'd like to thank you all. I have one other comment to make to the public that is talking about saving all these trees. Would you sign for liability on all these trees? Do you understand where these trees are next to a school? Did you listen to the expert? Spans of these trees is short. It's an accident waiting to happen. Get real here. We all like green trees. In this case, this board is well-intentioned. Their process hasn't been good, but ultimately, they're on the right track. Let's let them get this done. I would, well, you'd feel terrible if in the storm tomorrow, one of these trees fell over and hit a minivan full of children.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, I, uh, can you get the next person to, uh?
Sure. It says, Carrick, Carrick R.
Yes. Terrick Rogers, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, so I've served as a director for the past ten years on a HOA with a hundred and twelve trees under management. And I want to address the board. We have removed many trees as, for the same liability reasons you have. We have never once removed without a replant and it shows here. Um, you have been one of your own arborists that you brought in as a last-minute hired gun, says this should have been addressed years ago. You have underground stumps up there you've left for years. We hear you're shopping for opinions. Um, we're now subjected to this closest thing we have to a replanting plan is to let some random students from a junior college do it. This is not the level of service that is, that this community deserves. Um, I would ask the board consider a whole holding on. We've gotten a lot of bids to do it over a lot of years. There are a lot of people that'll give you a whole suggestion for what they'll take out, and they'll have the stuff in the following week. And we're gonna have to do it. We're gonna have to change trees out. But we don't have to cut it down and leave it bare and kick the can to say, maybe in the spring, some board will consider it. It can be done at once. This is not a pressing enough issue that we need to cut now and then kick the can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Sophie. I can only see borrow, I can't hear less. Sophie.
Oritzki.
Okay.
I, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
So I'll just make a quick comment. You know, we live right here on Highland. We've lived here for eleven, and I love the trees and I love our park very much, and our kids went to Hilltop School. I see families and kids walk by every day. And as we've had storms, especially over the last three or four years, we've lost a tree in almost every major one. And I was on the school site council at Hilltop School, and there was a great concern for some of the trees near the playground. And I appreciate the concern for that. And as much as I love those trees, you know, sometimes we need to say goodbye to them. And I'm eagerly looking for, living on this street, I love those trees very much, but they're also very scary trees. And even without a storm, I've seen them drop limbs. Luckily, nobody has been injured yet, but I think it's coming. So I think it's time for us to accept that some of those trees are at the end of their life, and we can make it a beautiful park. We can replant it with lovely trees that can benefit everybody um, in a way that's safe for our community. And that's the only comment I want.
Okay. Next is Mabry Benson.
Yeah, am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Okay. I, I'm watching these arguments, um, reading them on Nextdoor. I'm a little distressed at how many people I, there's a serious danger to our kids, our property, and everything else. And they say, "Well, we'll just put it off." Well, we have a storm coming Thursday. Is that tomorrow, I believe? And, uh, one of the reports said even a twenty-mile-an-hour wind, which we know is pretty mild around here, can cause trees, um, limbs to drop. Like I say, I'm distressed that people are not concerned about, A, the safety of our kids. Secondly, liability to the district. Some kid, or adult even, gets injured. You know who's gonna get sued? The district. And, well, okay, ka-ching. And, um, if that happens, maybe even once, I think somebody said their neighbor's tree fell, and they could not get insurance after that. Do you think people are going to, um, sell us insurance, liability insurance, uh, if we are incapable of taking care? And I consider eucalyptus the most despicable tree ever planted in California. And right behind it, I put Monterey pine. When I took a gardening class forty years ago, the teachers were not happy with Monterey pines and said, "Yeah, forty-year lifespan." And, um, there's nicer things to put in life. And if people are worried about that wildlife habitat, you know, and when they get something they like to live on, they will come back. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go ahead, next.
Okay, next is, um, Shashana.
Shashana Wexler.
Wexler.
Hi, good evening. I'm so glad we're having this conversation. Uh, these are not easy issues. And, um, I am twisting and turning quite a lot. That's a always really happy, uh, that finally we had reports from two consulting arborists like Andrew. I wish to heck that that had happened before you guys contracted with the tree removal company. Terrible process, but let's move on. Um, I mean, we finally did receive those reports. Big step in the right direction. I actually think we can use even more expert, independent weigh-in. In the last couple of weeks, I've been in, in formal registered consulting arborists, certified arborists, botanists, and even one investigative journalist who has been very concerned about fire and Monterey pines, et cetera, et cetera. It's obvious that there is actually a huge diversity of opinion out there about what is to be done. And so I, I'm just suggesting that we could use a little more time and a little more grist for deliberation. Um, I also want to suggest that ordinance stresses the necessity of actually having a replanting plan done before there is any tree removal. So I really think that's good advice for us as well. So in conclusion, I am one of those people who would like to see this awful binary between children's safety and tree preservation broken. It reminds me of, of, you know, environment versus jobs. Wait a minute, there has got to be a middle path. I am in support of limiting the tree work and put his great input tonight.
Thank you. Right.
Next is, um, Moss Han.
Great. Okay, Moss, go ahead and unmute yourself and make your comment. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, thank you all for your input and for your the tree cutting as possible, particularly the, the healthiest. And, um, I particularly want to appreciate, uh, Thomas Dodge's, uh, thoughts on some of the trees that could be selected for preservation, um, the Monterey pines specifically. I also want to note that I too, like the, one of the callers before me, am a homeowner and member of a private community that has, what's the oldest homeowners association this side of the Mississippi? Tahoe Meadows, which we have, uh, considerable area of, uh, trees that are protected, and we do a great job at that. Um, I also want to say that we need to be more deliberate, take our time, have more experts, perhaps a UC Berkeley expert. Um, I don't think we should be using volunteers for our landscaping, and I think we should have our landscaping plan in place before we do any cutting. I think we need to take a little more time. I think that, um, Eileen Natoli should be personally held responsible later if we are going to rush judgment on this, and if there's considerable evidence that can be compiled that says that she's, um, cooking the, the process to eliminate all of these trees and not treat each tree individually. Um, I also want to say that I spoke with a, an expert who mentioned that sulfur mixed with, uh, diatomaceous earth on the trees once a month for a year, and sulfur for fungus, di- diatomaceous earth to weaken the eggs' casings of the beetles is a recommendation of an expert. Um, I also mentioned that in person to Sylvia, uh, when we went on a walk with the trees recently. Um, again, I want us to postpone postpone rush judgment, and I thank you all. Good evening.
Thank you. Okay, we have eight left. Um,
Okay, and next is Steve.
Okay, go ahead, Steve.
Um, yes, hi, I'm sorry, Steve had to step out for a few minutes for our kids to go to bed. Um, so thanks for having me. Um, he wrote a lot of comments in the chat. My, my comment was, yes, we need more time. We need to have more expert join the conversation. We need to have the community involved. There's a lot of feelings in this conversation. Tough feelings. Some people love trees like we do. Some people see liabilities, and of course, of course, safety for our kids, for sure. But cutting a few trees versus cutting thirty trees, all of a sudden, is a bit really weird to us. And we would like to have more expert involved as well, and definitely have the community involved and, and, you know, share those reports. And I don't see why we need to speed up the process and cut all the trees out of the sudden. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Next is Douglas Bevington.
Thanks. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, thanks. Um, so I, I've worked on forest issues around the state, and I have seen many instances where people insist that these trees need to be cut down right now, and when it's challenged and a little time is taken, it's shown that that's not the case. And when that isn't stopped in time, there's losses that can't be undone. What I'm hearing tonight sounds like a very rushed process to reach a predetermined conclusion. And we're already seeing that there's more opportunities, more options that really deserve greater consideration here. Um, my daughter walks to school every day. And I can tell you, well, let me say, let me say first, we talk about replanting trees, but that language of, "Well, we'll just put new trees in," it's not the same. A, a big, large tree versus what gets planted is worlds difference. It's, it's decades before you get the sort of size, structure, and wildlife benefits that you get from the trees that we have right now. If those are cut, you can't undo that. My daughter walks to school every day, and the one thing that this approach guarantees is that she'll be walking through a clear cut every day. I don't think that's the right approach. I think you need more analysis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Lynell, next is Stefan Hack and Stephanie Oxley.
Hi, um, this is Stephanie Oxley speaking. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Well, I'm, I understand your concerns about risks, and I am very concerned about the risk of climate change. I think that that is the most pressing concern for children and the youth of today. And if we're concerned about our legacy, we need to make decisions that reflect our input into trying to mitigate climate change, which is preserving trees where it is possible, mature trees that sequester a lot of carbon. Monterey pines, actually, if you look at, um, a tree, a species, they sequester more carbon than a lot of other species. So that's a very important tree species to fight climate change. Okay? So we prune them. We prune them to deal with safety issues. And the other thing I want to say about that is, um, we also want to use arborists who do not have a conflict of interest, who do not work at companies where they profit from removing trees. We should be talking to arborists who profit from trying to save the trees first. You have to remove the trees when you have to remove them. But if there are ways to avoid that, I think that is how we are risk adverse, but also thinking about the future and thinking about how we can all be part of fighting and mitigating climate change. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next is Merrill Natchez.
Okay.
Hi, thanks. Um, I think all of us who are upset about the plan to cut trees are concerned that this is not of a part of a plan for stewardship for the park. First a plan, then priorities, then tree cutting as needed is something I support and would be happy to participate in. What we have is, uh, an idea of, well, let's cut a whole bunch of trees down without really understanding what this means for the park or the future. It needs to be part of a plan for the park, the replanting plan, uh, so that we aren't in the same problem forty years from now when we, when the trees are falling off or dead or dying. We need to start with a plan for the park that the trees are part of, and I, are uh, from UC or other places that we feel we can, uh, we, we can trust, which, given the fact that there was no independent arborist report prior to the protest of people, kind of, uh, un- undercuts anything that you do at this point. And also, I just have to comment, this process of the board getting to speak for an hour, being in half an hour late, getting to speak for an hour, and then allowing two minutes a person to speak is so typical of not listening to the people you represent. And that's our biggest problem here and why there's so much dissent. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next is Andrew Gutierrez.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Good evening. Um, I'm Andrew Gutierrez, Professor Emeritus, UC Berkeley. I was the founder of the Uni- the University of California, um, Integrated Pest Management Program, which oversees most of the work on agriculture in California. Most of us probably don't know anybody who was killed by a falling tree. I do. My wife's, one of the executives at Chiron Corporation, and his name was Vincent Piguet, was killed by a falling Monterey pine that crushed him as he awoke in the morning. There was a tree on Fifth Avenue, on Fifth Street, and cedar, which we would drive by every afternoon. And we'd say, "That tree's gonna fall one of these days." It did. It crushed a person in a car. My neighbor has two huge, um, Monterey pines. He lives in Berkeley. And his neighbor's trees keep breaking off branches and crushing his roof. So Monterey pine probably is not the best species for this area. They're probably more a coastal species. And when you put them in the foothills like this, it's the wrong soil. They grow like mad, and they're unstable. Now, I can help you get
We, we lost you for a second, Andy. Andrew? I don't know what's happened. I don't know what's happened.
Okay, so I can help, I can help if if to organize some of the information from UC Berkeley. As community members, it's good to have opinions, but sometimes they are not informed.
Thank you. Just under time, okay, and five more people left? Sorry, I think Craig Hancock has to go. I would like to give him an opportunity to respond to some of what he heard before we take the next public comment. So go ahead and unmute yourself, Craig.
Yes, so it's true, the trees are incredibly important in our lives. And I think that making an informed decision is absolutely the most crucial thing to do. These trees are not just coming up on the radar of being ill of health, at least some of them at that same property. I looked at them a couple of years ago.
Twenty eighteen.
Yep, and they were bad then and they're worse now. And there's no sense in saving anything that should be removed. It's irrefutable that there are beetles in the trees. I have pictures that I took on the day when I was there. It's it's not a big mystery. You can either see the pitch tubes or you cannot. So and the structural issues, the branch attachments of a lot of these trees, given their location, the amount of foot traffic underneath them, it's not a good, it's not a good scenario. So that I I I just want to put it out there. It doesn't mean there shouldn't be any trees. But those trees are the wrong trees in the wrong spot. So that's what I would end with.
Thank you. And we really do appreciate your time tonight and your work for on our behalf. And we will, I'm sure Tony will be in touch with professional tree care.
Good luck.
Thank you. Right, we're going to go back to public comment. Five more. Andrea Gordon looks like she's next.
Hi, thank you. Hi, sorry, it's late. Tried to, yeah, thank you for having me. Boy, I've been a neighbor for fifteen years and I've had three children and we've been walking by that school and those trees and it's hard to it's hard to to really actually to go after everybody has said so well. Sorry Sylvia, basically, I feel like we all agree that our children shoot. I feel like it's a rushed process and those trees have been there a really long time. If anybody stood on that property would agree that we could take another month, even with the rain coming tomorrow, knowing that we have known about this from two thousand eighteen, I think you just said until October, when we've all sort of come aware of the process to remove these trees that are actually I agree, some need to be, I I agree with the experts and some, but we don't have a plan to move forward. And it just behooves us to take a step back. We've yeah. Sorry, it's late. I appreciate everybody's time, but take a pause. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is Ciara.
Okay.
Wait.
Go ahead, Ciara.
Hi there. I'm deeply concerned about your plans to move ahead with this just because I think it doesn't need to be done in such a rush. And I don't think that a month or two working on a better understanding of this really is going to affect the outcome. With the exception that you'll, I think it's hugely important that you have community, real community meetings so that the community can really be educated about this so that you can avoid really the emotional backlash that's going to come from from taking all these trees out. I don't think they should all be taken out at once. You know, there are trees that are so obviously dead as a doornail that we're really not discussing those. Take out the ones that are dead as a doornail. And then let us really think about that what should be going in. Let's take the time to think about that. I was involved years ago in the park planning process and you know, that began, that came out of the community. And the direction then went to professionals. It didn't come from the top down. What the community wanted was codified and then the professionals helped to make it happen. And I think it's important that the community has that sense of being listened to. Something else about Monterey pines and fire danger, those pines are not as great a fire danger as some would like to suggest. Basically, because they've all been cleared out underneath, they're all limbed up. Fires do not start directly to such massive pieces of wood. Across the road, the school district has cleared out all the brush under the trees across the road on the park that it owns. So basically, I'm saying, let's all take a deep breath, get through the Christmas holidays and start working on this together again in the new year. There it is. Because basically, it's all, you know, this all kind of hit us like a bolt of lightning out of the sky.
Okay, thank you.
Sylvia, it's Sylvia Ellsbury. I'm here with Ciara.
Oh, okay. Sure, let me just restart the time. Go ahead.
I wanted to talk about the large live oak, which won't surprise you because I texted you about it. It's the only source of afternoon shade to the meadow by the recreation building. The arguments for its removal are very few and very weak. This large invaluable tree should be shored up with soil and structural support and pruned of dead branches in its under canopy as recommended by several of your own experts. If you paint with too broad a brush and take out thirty-three trees, you're going to be throwing out the baby with the bathwater. And you're going to have a a lot to answer for. So please remember that. I'd also like to say that it isn't, it is, I don't believe it's a settled question that it's okay for bark beetle mulch to be left lying around. And I'd be happy to send you some references to that effect. And also that the expert Judith was asked, is it effective, the treatment for the bark beetle infestation? And her answer was, it's expensive. That's not the kind of answer that we're looking for from an arborist. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Ted Blackenberg.
Okay. Go ahead, Ted.
There you go. Echoing what a lot of people have said. What is the rush? There is, there is, this is a big deal, clear cutting the top of the slope above the school and it's going to take a long time to replant that. You have professional tree services bid said thirty-three trees. Davies bid said twelve trees. That's an enormous disparity. One would leave the leave the area pretty well populated with trees. The other would just be the third cut. Yeah. What you're planning is a firing squad for the trees and usually a firing squad is ready, aim, fire. What you have planned is fire, ready, aim. So why, why are you possibly planning to take all the trees down without a sophisticated replanning program? So just, why not just wait a while? You have a, this is a lame duck session on the board. Why not wait till the till the new board comes on and we'll we'll get it done in a couple of months? Nighty night.
Thank you. Okay.
And next is Paul Orvita Doro.
Thank you Sylvia, it's Vita Doro. Sylvia, I know that you're a process person. And I'm just wondering, why can't we take our time? Because once you take the tree down, you can't come back the next month and say, oops, that one could have stayed. So you guys, this board and the other board didn't listen to the community when we said, take a pause. So perhaps tonight you can take a pause with the trees and let the experts decide which ones need to come down now and which ones have got a bit more life. We are all getting old, just like the trees. But that doesn't mean that we're, should be sentenced to death before our time.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
And next is Lynn.
Go ahead, Lynn.
Okay, first of all, Sylvia, I was stunned by your comment that you were sure that Tony was going to be getting in touch with a professional tree company soon. Before you've even gotten to the end of all the public comments, I found that to be insulting to the members of the public.
I'm sorry, but let me just explain something. He has been contracted in a previous action. So no matter what happens tonight, they will have to be in touch. That's the only meaning of that comment. Go ahead.
I hope that didn't deduct from my time.
Of course not.
Second, not necessarily. I would also like to echo the comments about this process. It appears to have been sort of bass ackwards. And then I'd also like to know what the estimate is for removing the thirty-two trees. And I see that one of the arborists is looking at me with kind of disdain. A family friend was almost killed by a falling tree when she was seventeen. So I understand the dangers of trees when they're not taken care of. And that the girl survived and can walk today is a miracle. So I take these trees and the safety issue very seriously. But a bad process is a bad process regardless of what's at stake.
Thank you. I'll remind the public that the meeting of October thirteenth has lots of information about bids, costs, so on. And the meeting notes from today also has all the reports on it as well. Are there any more public comment, Lynell?
No, Andrew Reed's hand is just up because he spoke earlier. And I don't see anyone else.
Okay, everyone gets one shot at the public comment. I'm sorry, that's kind of the way we, that's the rule. I want to give, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Oh, there's a Yan back.
Who?
Yan.
Okay, let's give that person a chance.
Yan.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I would like just like to mention that first, thank you for having this discussion. And second, I echo the other voices of what is the rush here? I would like to have a serious process. And especially given that the board was voted out and there is a new one coming. Let's take the time, let's have the community engaging in it. Let's have a potential like a vote. But we should not rush trees. It takes them these like sixty, seventy years until they will be so big and beautiful. So I vote and recommend to take the time, have a serious process about this, have completely independent people and try to do everything to save them and to ensure that every person in the community understand the process and had time to vote on it and to engage in this process. So thank you again.
Thank you. Okay. All right, I want to give our, I will note to independent arborists a chance to speak to some of what they've heard. These arborists were engaged in direct response to the community's request for this kind of expertise. So we're going to make the most of it while we have them here this evening. And I know there were a lot of things that were mentioned. I hope you were taking some notes and could, you know, respond to some of what you heard for us. So let's start with Thomas and then Judith.
Yeah, yeah. The idea that trees can be preserved, of course, they could be preserved. Just leave them there. You just run the risk. It, that's what we're talking about is the, what do you, you know, what tolerance do you have? That's what we talk about in tree risk assessment is the tolerance for risk. You have experts come in, assess the trees, not based on our opinion of the situation or your your group, just on the science of the trees and the observations we made. Now, if whoever is responsible for making those decisions decides to remove some and not remove some, then you live with the the results of that. Now prudent people may choose to remove the trees, folks that live closer to the trees in the fall distance of the trees might feel a little more strongly than the people that live a little further away. But as Craig said before he went off, we can see what's wrong with the trees. They're infested with at least two kinds of beetles. They have pine pitch canker. They have, they weren't limbed up, they're dying. So you know. I mean, I understand the sentiment for people who want to preserve trees. A lot of us have dedicated our lives to preserving trees. That doesn't mean these are necessarily the trees to preserve.
Thank you. And Judith.
I agree with Thomas. I'm tree risk assessment qualified and I am very concerned for these trees and their safety. And my sense of it is that it would take only one tree failing to change insurance rates. And I think that the Board of Directors is going to be responsible because they are the ones who are going to carry the expenses if anything happens. The other thing is that when you want to replant with new trees, once you decide where you want them, it can be done easily between the roots of the old trees. It can be done easily. And the, as I had in my report, young trees root much faster than old trees or bigger trees. And at the same time, when you plant new trees between the roots of trees that have been removed, they're going to grow three times faster than trees that are planted in soil where there's never been old tree roots before. And so my sense of this is that I'm concerned really about the safety issues in this case. And my feeling about trees is that as wonderful as they've been for so many of you, no tree is sacred if it's outlived its usefulness in the landscape. And so that's why I'm a proponent of doing all of the pruning at once while the rates are still low and there's been no accidents. And there's plenty of time to do a design, even if the trees are already gone. So I see nothing wrong with having the trees removed. And then, once the stumps are ground, then you have a clean slate and it's much easier to go ahead and plant. If you plant new trees in places where you're leaving old trees that provide a lot of shade, the new trees won't grow well. And so having the area clear and sunny will help new trees to establish much faster and much better than if you try to plant new trees under old ones that should be taken out. So that's my feeling.
I have a couple of questions. One is about the oak because I have, I I do think there may be an opportunity on that, on that oak, and I wanted to know, you know, what you thought about that.
With the oak, the downhill side of it where the soil has eroded away from the roots, roots go out two to three times the height of a tree. So the feeder roots on that side of the oak are probably under what is now pavement. And so there's very little anything there to provide anything to the oak on that side of the tree. Now, the other thing is that there's a direct vascular connection between certain roots and certain branches on an oak. And if certain roots are not functional, then the branches, maybe not on the same side, but somewhere but somewhere, are not going to do well. And that tree's having real trouble. And so my feeling is you could, trying to put soil up next to the trunk won't help because the feeder roots are way out two to three times the height. And they're struggling to find anything because that's all pavement out there. And so my feeling is that that tree is in a situation where it's in decline and it will be in decline no matter what. And even coastal live oaks can die from drought. And so the problem is there's no place for that tree to get water. And it's gone through, you know, three years or more of drought. And if you want to keep it, I wouldn't even try to add soil around it or put in something there. But you could prune out the dead wood and just see what happens to it.
Yeah, I, I did talk.
You want to leave it, you know, just prune out everything that's dead. And if there's any water that can get to the tree anywhere on it, just see what happens. And if you want to take it out later, if you had to, you could.
Another recommendation was to pull out the ivy and the asphalt on the upside so that it would get more.
That would be good, that would be good.
Um, okay. Other directors have questions, our general manager?
I think Thomas is in favor of preserving the oak. I don't want to speak for him, but I'll let him address that.
Yeah, that, that was in, in my report that to do just what Judy said, to prune out the larger of the dead. There's a few trees that look similar. When we did our walk, as you head back down towards a community center, there's one that's growing in a more open area, maybe has some ivy around it. But it, it's not restricted in near as much as the one with the pavement and that rock formation under those eroding roots. And it looks very similar and that's years of drought. And, you know, who knows what other, it's a built environment. So we don't know what that soil without testing is. You know, it's just a, a kind of a contrived environment. And it can vary drastically from just one area, just a few feet to another. When they, they build these parks, when you do all this construction over so many years. But I don't think that tree's going to fail anytime soon.
I would deadwood it, I would deadwood it. Take out all the dead wood and try to get water to it in any way you can. And then just wait and see what happens.
Exactly.
Other directors have questions? Director Sheris what?
I don't really have questions as much as some comments. And I mean, maybe that, but if you think now's the time, then I'm happy to.
Sure.
Before, okay. So I felt that we had sort of, in, in some of the comments that opposed us touching trees, a couple of things, themes emerged. So I just wanted to speak on those. The first one is really incidental, but folks keep talking about you've elected a new board, so you should stay, we voted you out. No, you didn't. Director Deppi and myself determined not to run. So you didn't, you had to vote for two new people at, at minimum. And so that, there's really no vote against this particular board. The idea that we can keep what trees we decide. Well, unfortunately, there's liability issues. We've now heard from four arborists, actually five. And they've all declared that substantial numbers of trees need to be removed. So there's liability issues. And Anne Danforth can speak probably much more eloquently on this than I, I'm not a lawyer. But once we are told that we have a liability issue, we have a liability issue if something fails. That means, in my understanding and from previous cases on this board, that our insurance company, the insurance rates can go up. The other thing they can do is say, you knew, you knew that there was liability. We're not covering you. So please ask yourself what a child's concussion costs out of pocket. Okay, I don't need to make it dollars and cents, that's really, but what is that worth? What is a pet worth? I mean, it's terrible. I don't want to equate these things that we love in terms of dollars, but that's what we have to assess as a board. Then there were questions of these experts aren't right, you need this particular expert. Again, expert shopping, first of all, Ms. Thomas, Mr. Dodge, Craig, they, they have decades worth of experience. I, I don't, we're, we're not going to go expert shopping for finding someone, you know, who agrees with us. And in fact, I understand we have secondhand accounts from Joe Davy. Mr. Davy didn't get the contract. I don't know what his opinions or, or whatever occurred with this conflict, but five directors were in agreement. Five directors have read the information and have known that there has been substantial neglect of the park over the last two decades. You still have an annex building that has been empty since 2008, an unused capital asset. You've had boards that declined to do seismic improvement on the community center before this board was able to get that improved. We've been handling things in a backlog. Director Natoli has gone after getting blackberry removal, which never happened before her time on the board in the park. So now we have blackberry abatement all over. She has championed removing dead and dying trees as best she can with our limited assets. I remind you that Nielsen Park, people have proposed and told us that those trees, every tree was diseased. That area has been renovated and replanted and revitalized. This is an exciting community project. The reason we pushed to get these trees out is winter is coming. And we know how stressed these trees have been over the past few years. And as Mr. Reed said, are, are you willing to provide the district assets? Should direct monetary assets, should something happen? And I don't mean to, you know, go off into fantasy land, but the fact is that there's real risk for this district and that's why we want to make this decision and we want to make it promptly and do it before what hopefully is going to be a very wet winter. So that then you can move forward in the late winter, early spring and do successful planting and revitalize the area. But bold action is needed and it's needed now, like the personality of the board members, that doesn't change the risk to the community. Thank you.
Okay, so I'd like to try to steer us into a conversation about making some potential, sorry, Director Deppi.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a couple of things. I agree with a lot of what Director Sheris what it's referenced. I've seen the ordinance or the, I guess it's the law that once a dangerous condition of property has been notified, we're liable. And if something happened, you know, there was that famous McDonald's case where the person was, Sue McDonald's, because the coffee was too hot and they found in that person's favor because McDonald had been warned a time and time again that the coffee was too hot. I mean, this is, you know, not quite the same situation, but it, once we've been warned that these trees are danger this, well, it's liability wise and, and just monetarily risk wise, but also just personnel risk. If we know they're dangerous, I wouldn't want to have someone get hurt because we didn't do anything. I think that's just, that's irresponsible. And someone said that we're, by not doing a planting plan, we're kicking the can down the road. No, we're actually taking action. Not doing it would be kicking the can down the road. And I think independent in a way of replanting plan, if the trees need to come down, you have to take them down. You can come up with replanting plan as soon as you can, but just because you don't have a replanting plan doesn't make the trees any less dangerous or any, doesn't make the reason for cutting them down any less, less compelling. And I, I really have to defend Director Natoli. She's worked on the park as long as I've known her on the board. She only wants the best for the park. She's really concerned and to think that either she had anything but really good intentions, it's, it's just really, people have to stop doing that. I mean, we're all volunteers, we all want the best for the community. Maybe you don't agree with this, but you've got, got to stop accusing board members of nefarious intent and stuff, that's just ridiculous. So I just know Director Natoli really cares about the park. It's done, so you know, stop. Right, I'm sorry. So that's, that's what I have to say.
Okay. Um, so, uh, we, we have the opportunity to adjust the plan. I hear from some board members, they don't want to do that. I think I want to just kind of put out a couple of categories of things to consider. One, I think that there is most definitely still a question about the boundary of the WCCUSD and the KPPCSD. And we were unable to get a definitive answer from the school district. We do have a survey, but you have to have benchmarks in order to, you know, to read it. They obviously had benchmarks to do the survey and the survey documents do not show any features. The only document I've been able to find that has a boundary is the Kensington Park Master Plan, which was submitted to Contra Costa County and was, you know, part of the official submission for the land use permit. And there are also assessor's maps that you can look at that also are a little unclear, but do indicate that some of the trees, as I explained earlier, between the fire road and the fence that runs sort of on the south western side of the school. And so I would propose that we take those trees out of consideration until a boundary can be established because it's, it really is uncertain between us and the district at this point. So I wanted to put that out there as a first op, upper thing to discuss. Director Deppi?
Have you talked to the school district about this at all?
We've tried, yes, multiple times. Eileen can speak to that a bit. You're, you're muted still.
We've been told orally that the fence line is the property boundary, but then there's some other documents that seem to contradict that and we are trying to get clarification on that.
And, and the fence line in the back is the boundary, but it's the other side of the fence.
I guess my question is, would they mind if we cut them down?
I, I think Anne might have something to say about that.
Yes, I would. I, I really do not want the contractor for the district entering into another agency's property and cutting down their trees unless you have a well, a detailed agreement in place beforehand, that's a very bad practice.
Okay.
And we're talking about, because I've seen different property boundaries, we're talking about just a fraction of some of those trees. And it may be that some of the trees are partially on park property and some of them partially on school district property. It's very unclear.
Um, I tried to make heads or tails. I actually tried to do a, a chart that, for purposes of this discussion tonight, to try and be really clear on what all the arborists had said about the various trees and which, and, and they all labeled them differently. So I wanted to just find that document of my own so I could at least try to identify in a common way which trees I, I think are, are, we're talking about here. And if I could, in, I will use the professional care tree bid, I think. And I can actually also speak to Judith's and Thomas's and, and they could also maybe even confirm that. But it looks to me like, oh, sorry. So the description in the professional tree care proposal would be, it would be removing the Monterey pine southwest of school over playground to grade. And it's described as being below Hilltop at the southwest end. And the cost for that was $5,750. And in Judith's report, I, I think actually in Thomas's report, it's tree number three, significant decline throughout the canopy. And, and also I think Judith, I think it was number thirteen on your list. That's one of the ones I think would be considered possibly WCCUSD property. Another one on the professional tree bid said remove four Monterey pines in same areas number seven above, priority two, $4,750. In Thomas's report, I believe those are trees five to seven. And number four, I didn't include because that's a really small, tiny pine and that was not bid on, but we've heard recommendations from others that it should just be removed because it's so small. And again, I believe that's trees number fourteen to seventeen in Judith's report. And I think, again, those are potentially on WCCUSD property. The other one is the removing of a twenty-eight foot double header Monterey pine midway down the path west of the school. That was 2750 in the professional tree care bid. In Thomas's report, I believe it's tree number eight, described as topped with large co-dominant stems. And in Judith's report, I believe that's number eighteen. Uh, should not be a part of this, you know, anything going forward because I believe it's, it could be on school property. And the last section of that, that could be on school property are removing four Monterey pine trees midway down path west of school to grade. That was the professional tree care piece at 3750. In Jude, in Thomas's report, tho, those would be trees number nine, ten and eleven, I believe. And in, in, in Judith's report, sorry, that was Thomas's report. And in Judith's report, I see that as trees nineteen to twenty-two. So I think those may be on WCCUSD property and we should not advance those.
You're talking the, the four through seventeen on Judith's report? Fourteen through seventeen on Judith's report? The four Monterey pines, you mean along Highland there?
No, this is below the southwest end of Hilltop. These are all along the fence line that go up along the fire road.
Oh, okay, okay.
West side. So everything I mentioned, that's why I'm, you know, I'm being very clear. I'm trying to be very clear that all of those trees are potentially in the, in the WCCUSD boundary.
It's seven to ten on the professional report. Item seven to ten.
Sorry, I just, I have it, wait, seven through ten. Okay.
And tell me again on Judy's report.
Okay, so on, yep, on Judy's report, it would be number thirteen, number fourteen to seventeen, number eighteen and number nineteen to twenty-two.
Well, I think it's unfortunate because as we found with the sewer grate, Hilltop getting those trees out is, is a proposition for the board in 2026. But I, I guess we have to, of course, follow Anne's excellent advice.
I think we have to.
So.
And if, if they turn out to be on WCCUSD property, I think the general manager should send all the arborist reports we have to the appropriate person, you know, the superintendent, Louise Fries, the principal and our board member representing our area should all get copies of that arborist, of those reports and they can make their choices. I also would like to propose that the coastal live oak also be removed from consideration. I believe that there's, I, I just read all the reports and I think all of them say it's worth giving this tree a chance. I know that there are people who, who really hope it can be saved because of the shade it provides. It doesn't provide, it doesn't pose a danger. And I would like to propose that we take that off the table.
I will agree with you, except I believe that KCC should have to sign a waiver that says they are aware of the risk of this tree near their building, near the building, that, that it could potentially, that, well, I, I agree with the Judith's findings that we, Trimit and Thomas, thank you both for finding some way to say. Judith's findings that we, Trimitte and Thomas, thank you both for finding some way to save it, but. Um, I think that they also should, their board should have to initial that, that. That the risk has been presented and we'll mitigate the risk, but they have to be aware of the risk.
Was there any risk to the, and that tree, or is that, I mean, maybe Judith and Thomas? Because I thought there was no risk, it was just that it was, it looked like it was dead or looked like it was suffering. I mean, I think. Is there a risk of any danger of that? To, Thomas said it was unlikely to fail. Is there, is that's, and I think the Monterey pines are a much more of a risk.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay, so if it was a Monterey pine, I think I would agree with you. I think this, in this case, honestly, this tree was not considered a risk. Um, Director Deppi.
Yeah, this, I, I think we shouldn't just take up the list and do nothing. I think, I think we should follow Judith's recommendation. And, and trim the, the limbs and.
Yes.
Get rid of all the dead wood. So it's not simply hunting on a tree.
Yes.
Modified plan.
Absolutely. And I think what we've heard here is, is taking off the dead wood. Um, we've heard, uh, trying to provide as much, uh, water on the up slope. Uh, I've heard taking out the ivy on the up slope and removing some asphalt, and I'm not sure exactly what's meant by that, but, um.
Well, I guess.
Specific.
For the tree company, you know, specify what they can do. They can't remove asphalt or some of those, they can't remove the branches, so.
Right.
To whatever extent the tree can, tree company can, um. Get rid of the dead wood, I think that's important to.
Yes.
Make that part of, of the contract.
Absolutely.
I don't know how much asphalt can be removed because that sometimes is used for vehicles.
Yeah, I, 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 I could, um, ask the, um, landscape architect to reference that to be very specific. And perhaps, uh, show Tony, so he can show Fernando, uh, what that might mean. And we can, again, this is all for the future, but certainly after the tree company, it needs to be, um. Uh, so I think those things off the bat are things that can be removed from consideration, uh, very easily, I think. Uh, for, for, for being caught, obviously. And, and you're right, Chris, that we should not just leave it. I think those, that coastal live oak needs some action. Um. I also wanted to make, um. A proposal that we do look at, I, I think I, I have tried to identify trees where there is no controversy. And I want to at least get some agreement on that, so that we can just kind of put any. Further conversation off the table on those. Director Sheris Watt.
I, I'm sorry, I disagree with you. We have, with all respect to Thomas, I mean, we have. Two arborists, Professional and Judith, saying that thirty-three trees should go. None of us are arborists. None of the community members that presented today are arborists. We have five, you know, I, I think we need to take the recommendations. I don't, I don't, I'm not. That's what we're liable for. We realize the risk with the others, but that's all I'm willing to do personally. Because I, I, I don't think that we get to pick and choose, because if a tree we haven't picked fails. We're liable. So I, I, I disagree, but. Maybe board members feel differently.
I feel like there's an opportunity here to, uh, come to some agreements and then discuss what there is not agreement on. So I wanted at least just take what there is complete agreement on, off, like off any further discussion. That's what I'm trying to get to for the stuff, for the time being. Director Deppi.
Uh, well, I'm, I'm in agreement with, uh, Director Sheris Watt. We've got a list of trees. That have been identified as dangerous and should be removed, and. I'm also not willing to go and, and try to nitpick it and try to figure out what really i- is critical and what isn't. I think it's pretty clear, so.
Uh, Director Logan.
Uh, yes, um, I'm looking at, um, because I, and I walked these trees last week, um. And the acacia trees, right, you know, to the southwest. Of, 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 of building, you know, and Thomas, you were, you addressed those earlier as far as. They're sort of not, not near anything of, of that's activity wise, and they're, they, they do. Still, uh, allow some, uh, nesting. Uh, opportunities and they, they're very, they're very small trunk trees. I, I don't know if those are major dangers at this point. I would put them at a lower priority myself, and I don't know if. Do you think, wha- do you think we could hold off on that area?
Uh, you're asking me?
Yeah, Tom, what do you, you, you were talking, just maybe just revise your discussion on that whole area.
Consider if you're trying to keep stuff. Based on, those trees are dying and they're going to continue to die. But they're not in a high use area, so the likelihood of them failing and hitting something is lower. That's all I'm saying.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Judith.
I, I would agree with Thomas, but the thing is they are dying. We've had three years of drought and there've been, uh, acacias dying all over the place. And so my feeling is that. For the association to get as many trees taken out at the same time with lower costs. And those trees aren't ever going to be good again. It'd be better to get them out now and then put in something else.
Director Deppi.
Um, yeah, I, I think beyond the cost, if the trees are going to have to be removed. Especially in the near future, do it now, so you can plant new trees. Uh, you know, just putting it off, it is kicking down, the can down the road. If you, if they, if they're going to have to be removed, they're going to die. Just get them out now, so you can start replanting and rebuilding the parks. It's silly to worry about, well, maybe we don't need to do it now and maybe in a year or two. What's the point of that? They're going to come out. Um, do it now and then replant. It's, it's silly to, to. You know, do it halfway, half measures now, half measures later, it's, uh. It makes no sense to me.
It would be more expensive to postpone the work.
Also.
Uh, Thomas, your hands was up?
Uh, yeah, so, and that's the first thing, uh, first, uh, summary of my report says that the considerations for a cost. Considerations, you know, your decision-making process has more to do, uh. Than just assessing the trees. And the logistics of it, the cost, the timing, those are all the factors that you guys, uh. Got all your cool positions to make your decisions.
Well, uh, you know, it's, it's pretty clear to me that the, the H, there, there, there's another, I just want to, I still want to go through what, uh, what I've. Spent a lot of time on, and I, you know, we can, um. You know, give direction afterward, but I think we should at least, um, take account of the things that are so clear to everybody that there is no disagreement. Because we hardly discussed them, and that would be another, I think, important step forward in the conversation, so we like know what we're talking about. And, um, there were, um, two, two, um. You know, dead trees behind the school, everybody's, you can look at them, they're brown, they're dead. Everyone agrees that those should come out. There is a.
Sylvia, Sylvia, you're, you're making assumptions about what's agreement, what isn't now. That, don't, don't try to assume, don't, don't make an assumption about who agrees with what.
I'm talking about.
If you're going to go tree by tree and take a poll of the board, fine, but don't start proposing, yes, these are agreement and these aren't. Because that's not the case. The board hasn't decided that.
I meant agreement among the arborists. Is that?
Oh, I mean, I mean, um.
I didn't mean agreement of the board. I just meant that, that every arborist who look at them says they're dead and it's clear.
Every arborist, you're talking about Judith, Thomas, Judith and Thomas, then?
Judith and Thomas, and I mean, I, you know, the two professional companies that bid on it as well, and even Sean.
Sean is not, Sean is not an independent arborist.
That, that's fine, then, I don't have to.
No, I, I liked him, he was a nice guy, but he's got a commercial interest in saving trees, so.
I'll just talk about Judith and Thomas then, if you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's not a problem. Um, so there are two, two dead Monterey pines, uh, behind the lower yard fence. And there is a Monterey pine that, uh, as you, um, come up from the, the, um. Community center on the left-hand side of the fire road, uh, that has been, um. Really, uh, marked as something that should come out and should come out pretty quickly. And I will just say that in, um, Judith's, it is number one. A very large Monterey pine infected with beetles, previously topped along the road. And in, uh, Thomas, I believe it's yours, it's also tree number one. And in professionals, uh, and I'm always using professionals too, because that is the, who we've contracted with. Um, it is item three, remove thirty-foot pine on hillside to right of community center to grade. And it's thirty-six hundred dollars. That one has been identified by everybody as, um, a, something that really should come down. Um, and then the other ones like that, uh, include the, um, Monterey pine. That is, if you were walking up the fire road. And you got to that, um, or if you were walking down from Highland, let's say, um. It's on the left-hand side, if you're walking down, in that sort of second row of trees, it has the basil root rot. And everyone has said that is a very dangerous tree and should come out immediately. So I think that's also something we don't have to like even think about. It's very obvious.
Sylvia.
Yeah.
It's quarter, it, it's almost quarter to ten.
Okay, so I, I would like to.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
I mean, yeah, extend the meeting and I'll tell you what I think.
I'd like to extend the meeting to ten-thirty.
No, uh, only if.
Second.
I would o- only second it if we just cut that KCC contract agenda item.
Uh, sure, it was just going to be an update and we're not reviewing anything, so we can, we can pull it, it's fine.
Thank you.
You know, the one thing is the board could, um, go through each of the trees that are listed on our reports. You don't need us here to do that. And you could pick the ones that we agree on, and then for sure they would come out.
That's what we're doing, I think, I'm trying to do. Uh, we have a motion to extend the meeting, seconded by Director Logan. We need to take this as a rule we have to do to, to extend the meeting. So, uh, can we take a roll, please?
Director Deppi.
Yes.
Vice President Logan.
Yes.
Director Natoli.
Yes.
Director Sheris Watt.
Yes.
And President Hossai.
Yes. Okay, um.
So Sylvia.
Yeah.
I guess. Um, as far as I understand it, Judith's report agrees with. Um, the original plan to, to remove all the trees.
I agree with Professional.
Okay, good, so.
And, and so, in a sense, you don't need me anymore because you know what I feel.
Right, right.
And then we have to look at the other report.
And so Arbor, I'm looking at the condition. Um, zero is dead, five excellent, and one i- is, you know, close to dead. The only trees that aren't one. On that report is the, the coastal live oak, which is three. And the other, the two Monterey pine, which are zero. So I only see two trees that are not, uh, marked as really bad and needing to be removed. That's all I see.
So, uh, one, one thing about that. The grove of acacias and the small grove of pines that are west of Windsor. Those are one item in my report, and there are dead trees in each of those small groves as well.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, I was, as I was going through those, those would be on the list that I thought, um. That should come out because I agree that they're not coming back. They are, the acacias are actually near some homes. Um, and, uh, I think dead trees are also a fire hazard when there is, you know, is a fire danger. So I, I think all those that are noted as dead, um. Could come out, and I think then the real, the real question, the real controversy remains then. The, there are eight pine trees, the four right adjacent to, um. The sidewalk and four sort of parallel to them. And, uh, you know, I am willing to defer that myself because. I, I always wanted a preplanting plan when we talked about trees, actually. I always thought it made sense. I think it helps people who are, are, you know, I think, I, I don't think there's any da- any, I don't believe that there's, they're worth saving in spite of what, you know, Sean was proposing. And I think that they are, should come out. I do think that they could come out with a planting plan in place. It would be easier for the community to accept, and, um, I think that, uh, you know, there's, um. I think that we could do it that way. That's what I would like to propose.
Where are those trees?
The four right along Highland and the four parallel to them.
No, there are children underneath those trees every day. Are you willing to put, I see dozens of children underneath those trees. We've been told that there's a risk. Are you willing, it's not your child anymore that's underneath those trees, it's my child. It's his classmates. And now I don't, I'm not passionate about it only because it's my kid, but it sure is immediate. And all these folks who don't have kids walking underneath those trees, I know we had one member that was very touched by it. But little kids are there waiting, there are people with, standing with pets. Um, it's unacceptable. We've been told that there's a liability risk. And the idea that we're willing to hold off because, you know, I'm happy, I, I contacted somebody about a replanting plan. It's been slow. Um, they've just gotten back to me today. They apologize, I, but, you know, I, I just, I find that unacceptable and not okay.
Um, the trees, the trees along Highland are a risk also to the cars that park there during the day. They're there for substantial lengths of time. The trees below Highland are a problem, and if you look at some of the branches, I have to say they're, um. Beautiful and really enormous, and you just think about the beauty of biology with how one cell can do so much. But they have these very long branches that are very heavy, that are coming from the trunk of the tree. And kids are playing there.
Yep.
And also, as, as I said, if they're going to come out, just take them out now. Uh, a planting plan doesn't mitigate the risk, it doesn't. Um, make it any less painful to, to take them out. You could have a planting plan, it's still going to be empty space when you take those trees out. So I, I don't see the reason to wait. If everybody assumes they got to come out, just take them out now.
Well, that's what we have to decide, and I think that we are here to reaffirm that decision or to change that decision. Uh, we've identified at least two things though that do change in the original planning or the original proposal, which is. All the trees that we identified as potentially being on WCCUSD property would not be touched unless that was affirmed. And that would have to be another decision. And then the coastal oak, we will take efforts to, uh, preserve it. Have I misrepresented anything or forgotten anything? Okay. So I think we have to take a vote then, if we are, uh, directing the general manager to proceed. Uh, in the same, with all the other trees that were identified. And, um, uh, except, except for those that were, um, that's about giving direction to the general manager now, um, that were, um. Uh, except for the ones that were identified as should not proceed.
Would you please identify them by item number of the, on the professional tree contract?
Me?
Or someone, yes.
I can do it, I did, I did it, but I'll do it again as part of, I guess, maybe this motion, if you will. Uh, so we are, uh, giving direction and, and with an affirmative vote of the board to the general manager. Uh, to proceed or not to proceed with the professional tree care. Uh, proposal, but we have agreed that the following items will be taken out of consideration for any removal.
So, uh, it's already. They will be deleted from the contract.
Yeah. Deleted from the contract, and that, those include, okay, um. In the professional tree care proposal, and Eileen, you may have to help me here, because I actually don't have the items for professional tree care. I have sort of the descriptions.
Okay.
Um.
You have the contract, um, exhibit.
Uh, yes, I, I could get that, um.
That would be helpful, because I'm going to need to modify the contract.
Okay.
Isn't that on the website? Is the proposal?
Sorry, I, I have it now. I, I apologize. I, I just have to match it up here. Um. I, I think you identified them, actually. They were like.
Yeah, uh, so, um.
Seven, starting with seven?
Starting with, what number seven are you talking about?
Uh, on professional tree care.
Professional tree care, seven, eight, nine, and ten. Are the ones that are potentially on school district property.
And what about the, uh?
And the coastal oak is, um.
Coastal oak is number sixteen on the professional contract.
Yeah.
Okay.
But also, um, we did not, um, pick up on the professional items one and two. And item eighteen.
How about item seventeen?
Seventeen and eighteen.
I, I would actually have to propose that we consider item seventeen and eighteen, because on, on the walkthrough with others, they've identified this as probably pretty important. And since we're taking off certain things, seventeen and eighteen, we're pruning four live oak trees from the basketball area. Prune out dead wood, cracked or broken branches and reduce end weight where necessary and shape as much as possible for tree health and safety. And number eighteen is prune live oak with twig light. It says next to swings, um.
That's all in that same area. Um, and also I would then add um sixteen to do the pruning of six, of sixteen.
Yeah, which is the one we talked about, the coastal live oak that we're talking about saving.
Right. You prune uh okay, prune sixteen. And was it, so right now I'm removing seven, eight, nine, ten. I'm providing that sixteen be pruned only to remove dead wood. Is that correct?
Yeah, and adding seventeen and eighteen.
Because we had not approved seventeen, I, I didn't propose seventeen and eighteen, because I thought Fernando could do that work. Okay, so we'll remove those as well.
Yeah, no, no, add seventeen.
Wait, I'm sorry. Do they get, does seventy need to get deleted from the contract or?
They, they, they stay on the proposal, but when we, when we, when we voted in October, we did not add them to the, to what we wanted. So they, they're in the original proposal. We did not go forward with them. Now we are.
So they're going to be added to the contract?
Yes.
Okay.
Let me jump in here. I'm going to have to take off. I would ask that if you have any other questions that you email me.
Thank you very much for your time.
This is, we're definitely down to board business.
I'm kidding, you're right.
I'm eating dinner, but I, I can go to.
If you have any questions. And uh, best of luck. I admire what you do. I'm on uh, one of the I S A boards and uh the process is uh it is what it is, as I say.
Thank you.
It is. It is. I'm on an aesthetic pruners association board.
Yeah.
So we're doing things. So anyway, I'll go too.
Thank you.
So good luck.
Both.
And, and let us know what happens.
Okay.
Okay, take care. Bye.
Bye-bye, okay. Um. So then we are going to uh just affirm or express a different opinion on uh the other trees uh in particular, which of course the biggest concerns are the Monterey pines along Highland uh as well as the other trees we've discussed, the acacias, the, the dead trees that are um at the western end.
Say that again, please.
Yeah, say it again.
Yeah.
Sylvia, can you say that again, please?
What, what, what do you want me to say again?
What you just said.
So we, we need to affirmatively either uh instruct the general manager to proceed with the removal of all the other trees other than the ones that we have specified in the proposal as we, as we had voted on it in October. And I don't know, Anne, if, if we need a motion for that.
I, I think it would be helpful if, if we had an articulated motion, just so the record is clear. I would recommend that you provide the um tap, the general manager with direction to negotiate with the professional tree company to delete items seven, eight, nine, and ten. Um, to provide for pruning only of uh sixteen. So it's to try and preserve the coastal oak and add seventeen and even seventeen and eighteen to the trees uh slated for removal.
Right. And just to be clear on the proposal, one and two would never, were never taken up.
One and two were never subject to the contract.
Correct.
Okay.
I, I did have a question of Sylvia. Uh, the original list that you went through, you utilized Thomas's and Judy's reports. And the trees you identified, I think there were eight trees, eight or nine trees that uh you listed as possibly on the school district property.
Mm-hmm.
But when we went through the professional tree care proposal, there were only four.
Um.
No, there's a total of ten on the professional um tree. Um, number seven is one tree, number eight is four trees, number nine is one tree, number ten is four trees.
Thank you for clarifying that. Okay.
Well, someone needs to make a motion if they want to make a motion.
Uh, I had one other suggestion. There, there is a possibility that we might come to an agreement with the school district and they would uh uh sign an agreement to allow the removal of those trees.
Um.
So if you give me uh the latitude to work with Anne and the school district in the next week.
Um. I think Anne has an opinion on that.
Sure.
I, I generally speaking advise against entering into other uh people's property uh even for a good cause such as this. Uh, yes, we could negotiate an agreement. It would take some time. And if there, if the board wishes to see this, this work done promptly, uh, I would suggest that there really isn't time to negotiate an agreement with the school district.
I would also rather that that it be separated if it's their property, and if it's not, then it's taken up again.
Yeah, I, I think we just need to wait to get a response from the school district on the property boundary. Um, I will be happy to make what I think is the motion. Um, and then uh you can let me know. Um. So the setup and for this motion would be what, to um give you direction on modifying the contract or to give um Tony the direction to modify the contract? Tony the direction because he has signatory authority? Okay. I, but, but let, if I may clarify one more point, are, are we talking about the proposal or one of the exhibit to the contract? Which one are you working from? I'm looking at the proposal. I don't have the contract in front of me. What's the date of the proposal? I just want to make sure that I September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. September twenty-eighth, got it. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I move to um direct general manager Tony Konstantouris to negotiate with Professional to modify the September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two pro- proposal from professional tree tree care as follows. Include item one, three, four, five, and six. Also, remove items seven, eight, nine, and ten. Include items eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. Modify sixteen for pruning of the live oak. And include items seventeen and eighteen. And I forgot to mention to exclude items one and two. So these are the ones that are going to go into amended contract. And, and we're using the numbering base that was used in the September twenty-eighth proposal. Yes. Yeah.
I'll second that, assuming that was a, a good motion.
Your role call?
Yes, please.
Director Deppi?
Yes.
Vice President Logan?
Yes.
Director Natoli?
Yes.
Director Sheriff Swat?
Yes.
President Hossai?
No.
Okay, motion carries for one.
Okay, well, we've had a very vigorous debate. We had two independent arborists who uh came and gave us information. And we have reconsidered the proposal that was in front of us, and that is going to be the end of our meeting this evening. Uh, we have pulled the second item off the agenda. And our next meeting, regular meeting, would be December eighth. And I don't think I'm missing anything else on our agenda. Am I missing anything else? Any uh director comments or general manager comments? Director Deppi?
This is the actual last meeting. I know we said that last meeting, but this is this is the last, this is really the last tour, I promise, so. Thank you. Goodbye.
All right, take care.